... meeting for Wednesday, January sixteenth, 2019, five thirty. We can start with a roll call, please.
Brett Waller.
Here.
Eric Geis.
Here.
Jeremy Ratliff.
Here.
John Smith.
Here.
Maria Volpe.
Here.
Linda Yingling.
Here.
Now, Dashver.
Here.
Paul Brew. Kevin White.
Here.
Now, if we'll stand as we're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the MAPS Board of Education meeting. MAPS respects the roles our elected board members serve and the functions of our board meeting. Board members and administrators are committed to working collaboratively to provide our students a safe learning environment and the highest level of achievement. This meeting is a formal event and the professional conduct is the expectation for all in attendance. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Sample. Tammy, I did not see any forums filled out for public comment. Is that correct? All right. We'll move right into recognition then. During this point on the agenda, the board would like to start by recognizing this evening, Delmer Pollock, for his help in securing the trailer for The Marching Jays. To purchase that through a donation received. I don't see Delmer here this evening, but I would provide this to Ally to get that together. Can you just share briefly what everything goes into with that trailer for The Marching Jays?
Sure.
I know it's been a long time coming that we got that updated, so it's a pretty neat opportunity here.
Yeah. Um, I was really wanting to play. I'll stand up.
You're great.
Um, yeah, so our old trailer, as you may have heard at a previous board meeting, is kind of unroadworthy, kind of falling apart. It might not pass inspection if we were to get pulled over. So, the donation that came at actually like a perfect time helped get us this trailer and it doesn't have a lot of mileage on it. It was a great price that didn't take up all the donations. So, the plan for the trailer is to completely outfit the inside so that way it's like custom fit to our uniforms, our instruments and everything so that way it's safe, efficient, ready to go so kids can walk on, walk off, grab all their stuff. And then the idea is also to put like custom logoing around the outside to really show school pride. So, it'd be awesome.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Our next recognition this evening, we'd like to recognize the Friends of the School Forest for their ongoing support. Tonight, we have Mr. Nolan here as the School Forest Director and the officers of the Friends of the Forest, so we'd like to recognize them this evening. With us tonight is President Rich Prangie, Vice President Richard Flatto, Secretary Becky Flatto, and the Treasurer Jeanette Bitterman. If you could stand up here, I'd like to thank all of you for all of your efforts.
Thank you.
Come up here. Russ, can you get in the picture? Take a quick picture. Thank you.
Thank you.
Russ, if you could stand up here just a quick. Certainly, it's recognition and we would like to talk about our partnership and it's every year we have a budget that we can work with at the School Forest and then we have really our needs at the School Forest. And I believe the team on the Friends of the Forest is all forty-three strong, yourself included.
Yep.
This is the officers that when something is needed to help with the improvement out there, if we can't get that out of the budget, we do ask for some help if it's volunteerism, putting something up, or financial donations or...
Financial donation is not the only thing we do.
Correct. A lot of labor.
It's a big part because School Forest is a big place and most things in this day are too expensive. So, we do have a lot of financial support and we look at it. But above and beyond that, they're like collaborative support team. And within the district, we have a lot of structures set up where most of the teaching has a support team to go to, whether you are a principal or administrator. And with your inability with those that are there every day, that's who you go to. This is my support team here because this is my sounding board that I'm frustrated if something great happens or something is shocking and we need to take care of it. This is who helps me solve it for us and take care of it without questions asked day in and day out. And without that, our School Forest program would not be what it is and students wouldn't get the experience they are. So, very thankful to these four members as well as the additional thirty-nine that come up there and volunteer services and share their expertise whenever we need it.
And this is just a little way to say thank you. It's just a token of appreciation. You guys do, and certainly share that with the entire group. And one of the great things that you guys provide is there is, if you want to put a quick plug in, in a couple weekends, there's going to be a time where they're volunteering again and we have a lot of good things going on on Saturday.
On Saturday, January twenty-sixth is our open house. We call it an annual re-renter. The Friends, the musical when Mary was directed took over with Catholic Support that in conjunction with the district. And so, these friends have been meeting with me on a regular basis, making plans, contacting people to come in and help on that program. We have our logger coming in with courses and giving out a logging demonstration on the old factory. We have a lot of experts coming from Lady Smith doing animals to talk about animal ecology and the importance of all animals in our ecosystem. And these folks are my primary base to help get that stuff lined up to make sure it's going to happen. They will be my workers on that basis, helping walk along and enjoy the day and talk to people and not have to worry about making sure things are done because they will be taking care of it. So, God willing, should we get snow, please come and enjoy skiing. Otherwise, come and walk through the forest and roast marshmallows and watch kids slide down a hill at about ninety miles an hour, crashing into a snowbank and getting on nothing and enjoying all the stuff that we've got going on.
We do plan on having nice fluffy snow and water.
Our next recognition this evening is for Barbara Lyon for applying for and securing two Donors' Choice Grants valued at one sixty-nine and eighty cents and two seventeen and two cents respectfully, respectively. Excuse me, these grants will go towards third grade reading materials to supplement Ms. Lyon's classroom library. I believe she's not able to attend this evening, so we will get that to her. So, at this time, we'd like to thank Barbara Lyon. Our next recognition this evening is for Gerald Byer for applying for and securing an Open Education Resources Innovation Grant in the amount of ten thousand dollars. This grant will be used to fund our Math Institute training in February, which then frees up some Title II money for other needs. Our Engage NY Math Resource is an open education resource and this grant provides training for districts that choose open education resources. Thank you, Gerald.
I'd love to. You know, I... The, uh, this application came from CISA nine, the informist of an opportunity. Because we do is engage New York at the elementary for a math program, which is a pre or open resource, was one of the criterias. So, I kind of forgot about it over the Christmas break. We were notified that we did receive the reward. We asked for eight, they gave us ten, is my understanding, so we're pretty excited about that. And with that money though, that money will fully fund our trainers coming in February for our staff development day. We have four trainers from the Wisconsin Math Institute. So, we were going to be funding that from Title II, so this will supply that and it'll free up money for other professional development. So, it worked out pretty well for us.
And our last recognition for this evening, last but certainly not least, in case everyone has not heard, January fourteenth through the eighteenth of 2019 is the Adult School Crossing Guard Recognition Week in the state of Wisconsin. I'd like to take this moment to thank our crossing guard from nearby Washington Elementary School, Jeff Setler. Apparently, he was unable to attend, so we will get that. And we'd also like to thank, we are thankful for all of our adult school crossing guards for helping keep our kids safe. So, let's recognize all our crossing guards at this time. Next, I'd like to turn over the agenda to Abe and Bella, our School Board of Education representatives, with some updates for the board.
All right. Hello. At the high school now, next week is finals week. That's our study preparation. This year, we have a new final schedule at the high school. It's three days and we have really nice long periods for the tests and periods like built into study, which I think is really nice. And we also have some ACT prep for the juniors during that time as well. Along with that final schedule, musical has begun and is still going through practices. Uh, the first choreography and singing and the pit, they're all going pretty well, is my understanding.
Um, boys' basketball is having a really good season so far. The record is ten and three. They had a game in Rose knee last night and they won by a lot. And their next game's at home against East on Friday. Girls' basketball is also doing okay. Their record is seven and six. Their next game is tomorrow at home against Wausau East and the wrestling season is also in the north. Scheduling for classes for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year has just started and a lot of students are interested in the new classes that are being now available to schools, to our students. And I'm personally really excited for AP chemistry. And the ACT is coming up fast on February twentieth.
Any questions for our student board representatives? Go ahead, Linda.
It is the first weekend of April.
Last night. Thank you.
Fridays, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, right?
Any other questions for our board reps? All right. Thank you, Abe. Thank you, Bella. This time, I'm going to go back to recognition for a moment. I see, just wanted to refresh our memories and go through that and recognize Delmer Pollock for his help in securing the trailer for The Marching Jays through that donation that we had, so... Delmer, if you could come up here and would just...
You're going to mark me tardy?
Well, that's Tammy's job, but we do want to...
You got it. I figured we were going to get our picture taken here. All right. There we'll see.
We'll try not to, try not to...
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
We can talk about The Marching Jays and the trailer, so we wanted to thank you for your hard help in this, you do a good tradition for the program and...
Yeah, I'm impressed that you have the funds to make that happen, so it should be a lifetime deal there. I think it's great.
This time on the agenda, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Sample for the administrative reports.
This time, each one of our buildings is describing what innovative programs they have. You'll see a common theme and that's student engagement. There's a lot of great things going on in our buildings when it comes to engaging students, keeping them safe, and technology also mentioned in there. And I've seen them myself, they're really cool, the Hydroponic Garden that was purchased with the grant. I know that Maple Grove and Jill Seaman at Pine River School for Young Learners and there's one other Hydroponic Garden out there at Washington with Tricia. I want one in my own home. They're that cool. Any questions at all about what's going on in any of our buildings from Pine River through the high school? Next, you've got Jill Seaman's monthly report, Pine River School for Young Learners with her monthly data. Any questions with that? Karen's is going to be a little bit further on in Board of Education business when we talk about the two thousand eleven Wisconsin Act one fourteen and two thousand fifteen Act fifty-five open enrollment for pupils with disabilities. You can see the Director of Human Resources report, a little bit of information about the insurance tracker that's been at the committee level as well as the Wisconsin Retirement System informational meeting that's going to be coming up and an upcoming UWSP recruitment Got the food participation update from Laura. Any questions with the food service? Brian couldn't be here tonight, but if there are any questions, I would entertain those for the quarterly summary of purchases between five thousand and nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. Also attached, the quarterly out-of-state travel report. Any questions on those two entries? Also, the monthly budget update, and that's his monthly status report for Brian Dasher. Any questions that I may answer for Brian? Kesha's technology report talks about smart certification, slate conference, which I referenced later as well, some of the things with the AV media coordinator updates, et cetera. Any questions for Kesha? And then my report is highlighting the monthly activities and meetings. We made a change to our ALT agenda format. What we were finding is that we formatted our ALT meeting like we used to format our cabinet. That's changed a little bit, that we've departed a little bit from the Studer and putting them into the four pillars because we were finding that our time is extremely valuable. I like to keep it to starting meetings on time and ending on time because we're pulling our administrators out of the buildings. And so, what we did is I've created a priority type agenda to where any of those things, any FYIs can certainly be handled, email, they don't require face-to-face, but we want to get the highest priority items on our agenda, so we make sure we cover those. And I didn't like the top-down flavor of the ALT meetings, and so that's been revised too, that other administrators can contribute agenda items for that as they see fit because we learn in numbers. And so, a concern that one administrator may be having is maybe shared with other administrators as well. So, it's, we've had one meeting under this new agenda and it seems to be working well. Nothing is in stone. If we see improvements that we need to address later, we can certainly revise it again. And then you can see the cabinet meeting topics, and that's exactly the way our ALT meetings work as well. Strategic items first, followed by operational updates and follow-ups, and then FYI towards the end. Any questions regarding my report? Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Sample. Next on the agenda, we'll go through the committee reports. First on the list is the Curriculum, Technology, Pupil Services Committee. They met back on December eighteenth as well as January fifteenth. We had the draft minutes included. Does anyone have any questions for those reports?
Did, uh, so just like, I have my clarification, right? So, you, the discussion about hunter safety and all that for the summer school, you're going to have more information, talk about it in February and then see what happens.
Exactly. Because Brett, it was, it was my topic that I had brought up and I was unable to attend the meeting last night and moved it to, they had moved it to February. Paul chaired the meeting last night and moved it to February, so we'll take care of it in February and bring it back to the board in February.
Linda, did you have a question as well?
Well, I was at the meeting last night and we did have some discussion in regards to the hunter safety.
I saw that.
It was very informational. Um, and it looks like we're going to try and move forward with some of it, but we're starting to put a little bit more information in there. We'll be back to it in February.
Looks promising for summer school.
Just wanted to add, and because we did talk a little bit about some of it, um...
Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions or any members of the Curriculum, Technology, Pupil Services Committee? All right. Moving on then, our next committee report is the Safety Subcommittee. We did, last met on January seventh. Dale Bergman is available if anyone has any questions. Does anyone have any questions this evening for our Safety Subcommittee? Seeing any, our next committee report, it would be from the Finance HR Committee. Minutes were attached from January ninth committee meeting. And our chairperson, John Smith, is available, as are any other committee members for any questions. Do we have any questions for the Finance HR Committee this evening? All right. Thank you. The next committee report we have is from the Facilities Committee. Last meeting was on January ninth. I'm the chair of that committee currently. Anyone have any questions for this Facilities Committee? All right. Hearing none. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business. The item that we're monitoring on there and continuing to progress through committees is the Alice Training for Students. We have taken that in, back even in November after we started talking about this in the beginning of the fall term to the Safety Subcommittee as well as Facilities. It has then continued to gather information and we have talked about it here at the regular board meeting, but we'll continue to do that. The next discussion will be at the Curriculum, Technology, Pupil Services Committee meeting in February and if we need to have further discussion at the board level, we will talk about it at that time. That is the update on that. Any questions tonight? Otherwise, that will, we can add things to that agenda for Curriculum, Technology, Pupil Services as well for February. Anyone have anything they'd like to add tonight? John?
Can we get a, kind of an overview of what the end game looks like on that process? What do we foresee coming to the board and what timeframe? And then what's, is it a package of all these conversations and a conclusion or what's the goal?
That is the goal. We had information ready yesterday and we tabled it until the next CTP meeting, and so that is the, the end goal, is to give you the whole package of what it's going to look like.
So, like in March, we'll have the full Alice Training debriefing, I guess, so to speak, and these are the next steps of either implementation, adoption, or...
We're well on track for March, yes.
Okay.
Should we have that in February because it's...
It's the day before, and so we could put, we could still put information onto it, absolutely.
That's January?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Just to clarify my memory, or refresh my memory, if when students do book the Alice Training, is that led by, since we have certified trainers at the sheriff's office and I also think our SRO, the certified trainers, so does Mark guide this training or is it...
There'd be a number of us that are certified that can guide the training. Yeah, so the more the merrier with this one.
To the combination law enforcement, James, yeah.
Sure. And through the DOJ requirements, we've got more training, more people trained than ever before for things like Alice curriculum, for crisis team trainings, those types of things. Okay, so, yeah.
You know, and to follow up on that while Dale's coming up, because I'm going to have him explain that part of what's going to go to the Curriculum, Technology, Pupil Services. Is the proposal and the options of who will all work together on that team and what's going on? Linda, did you have...
Yes, exactly. I was going to say, because that's why it was questioned to be made is so we can have some more discussion about it, gather information and then bring it out the pool. Fortunately, we were able to meet as a whole group last night and so that's why that pushed out.
Sure. And Dale wanted to add something and I'm sure he'll...
Again, the goal for the student training is the future for our teachers in the school to train students, not in Alice protocols that we as staff members have to train, but it would be information about Alice is in the direction of the Alice training. So, students, we have, there's appropriate training for children, kids that will be different to our teachers. Gerald's got some lessons that have to narrowize the field that we've discussed, both of them and we're finding that opinion of those...
How long does the L training take?
Well, depending on how much you're quickly adopted, could be seven lessons that are very, very less easy to retrieve. So, we have to decide that to me, how much, um, the difficulty of the model process. Maybe they're only be a little on a discrete level or just that we're looking at two to do. That's something that could be a little bit different.
A good refresher point from last meeting was that it was, I believe, Mr. Smith brought that up, that clarifying point, that that is not a one-time thing, that is ongoing based on the grade like you're stating. So, every year, you build on that and it's age or grade appropriate and that's some of the things that they will discuss, how much time to be allocated toward that. John, did you have something to add or clarify?
So, if we choose to launch it, a kindergartner might be exposed to Alice training thirteen times before graduation based on the various grade levels is the understanding.
It's not that they're going to be Alice trained, but to understand what Alice means, what types of different threats there are and everything, and it's appropriate to things they understand. The younger grade levels may be, it's not, I'm not scared, I'm prepared, you know, things like that, not Alice, because, you know, they're not going to be countering, obviously, but they're going to be able to understand what the teacher talks about if they, when they start doing these drills and everything.
So, the drills are included?
The drills will be part of our safety plan, that the kids will be able to understand what the purpose of those are, for them, yes.
So, we can have the kindergarten at grade school level, and we'll be drills.
Yeah. Department of Justice requires us to drill that twice a year now, so they have to start understanding what we're doing.
On one hand, it's a shame, you know, a kid's even have to go through this given what we live in, but I'm, I'm pretty glad they will take our time and, and take it step by step to make sure we have a process, appropriate process in place, especially like the age-appropriate part of it too. And the fact that this is ongoing, so it's just sort of like a one and done kind of thing.
Correct.
John?
Just for the board's interest too, the Facilities Committee takes it probably the conversation to a deeper level in that these drills are required to be done twice a year and Dale and his teams are moving from just drills to actual tabletop execution of start to finish, not just gathering kids in one spot, but how do we gather kids at the mark? How do we get, how do we do the entirety of the scenario? So, I guess I'm just offering that as, there's a, when I think drill, initially, you think of a fire drill. We all walk outside, the bell rings, teacher tells us to go back. It's a lot deeper and more logistics involving busing and the Merrill go-round and the police department and the sheriff, so all that stuff is taking place at levels that hit committee but not necessarily come here. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Any other questions or recommendations? We can certainly add that to the CTP agenda for next month, otherwise I think we have a good baseline on, on that bit of unfinished business. Hopefully, as stated, we can bring it to the February agenda. The next part on the agenda for tonight is Board of Education Business, and the first topic there is the open enrollment spaces available at MAPS. The two thousand eleven Wisconsin Act one fourteen discussion and two thousand fifteen Act fifty-five open enrollment for pupils with disabilities. The topic summary sheet for this was prepared by Karen Baker, and there is a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening?
I recommend the motion to not deny students with disabilities, get us that space for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty enrollment.
We have a motion by Maria, second by Jeremy. Do we have any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, state nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Our next topic on the agenda is the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty preliminary budget forecast. The topic summary sheet was provided by Brian Dasher. He's unable to be here. That was informational only. If we have any questions tonight, we can talk to Dr. Sample or the Finance HR Committee as led by John Smith. So, Brett, if you have a question...
Same thing that Brian chose, there weren't, he didn't do any additions or changes to that.
So the same things we walked through at the meeting for the next two years.
Any other questions on this information as provided by Mr. Dasher?
I want to share one thing that I think you would all be of value. One of the things we recognized in that committee meeting is, is that once the biennial budget is announced, the district may, maybe to our advantage to stop thinking in one-year periods and to start thinking in the two-year period, because the revenue stream is going to be the same. But as we looked at these charts, you see the negative $60,000 and the negative $300,000, instead of approaching it as two separate issues, just slap them together so that we can be more efficient in not worrying about, oh, we're fine this year, but next year we're in trouble. Actually, it's about, it's, the budget's the budget. We're in trouble right now, we should be reacting right now. So that's another thing that Brian said that he'd work on, and I think we were all in agreement, that was a good idea.
The unknown budget coming from the state creates estimates, but with a known biennial, Brian can put his finger right on it, and we can plan accordingly.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other questions on that topic of the preliminary budget forecast? Otherwise, our, our next topic is the 2018-2019 proposed budget revisions. The topic summary sheet was provided by Brian Dasher as well, and a recommended motion from the Finance HR Committee. Do we have a motion this evening?
Motion to approve proposed revisions to 2018-2019 budget as presented.
We have a motion by Jeremy, a second by Maria. Any discussion? Here again with Mr. Dasher not being present this evening, we'd have Dr. Sample or John Smith, the members of the Finance HR Committee available. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the Kids' Kingdom Leasur renewal. There's a topic summary sheet from Brian Dasher and a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? We are, we're one ahead. We have a motion by Maria, a second by Brett. Any discussion on the motion or this topic?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Linda.
Because you just said up for discussion.
It is up for discussion.
And I'm not sure, this might just be a question totally for Brian, but, so if I'm understanding correctly, after the June 2020, we won't be offering another lease to the Kids' Kingdom, or will it get changed after that again? Or is after 2020, we're completely?
The lease will expire.
Expiring. Is there an opportunity for them to re, to get another lease?
Not coming out of the committee, no.
No. Okay. And then, do we have plans? I guess this would be probably a discussion for another topic, plans for that building.
And things like that. The one, what we wanted to do was to be sensitive and get this as far in the future as it can so that they can have plans. Obviously, we're not in the daycare business, but we're sensitive to the need for daycare, and so we wanted to stay way out in front of it. I know that Dale has plans within his. Right now, the building is less than perfect, I would say, and it's, it's going to start costing us some money. So we're not too there yet. We're looking at the strategic plan, and that's going to incorporate any plans for all of our buildings, including that one, since it's our property.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussions on the topic or the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next agenda item is a proposal to hire a full-time aide to cover for absent staff at the high school. There's a topic summary sheet collaboratively generated by Brian Dasher, Shannon Murray, and Brad Potter, and a recommended motion from the Finance HR Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? John?
I'll recommend a motion to approve the hiring of a full-time aide to cover absent staff at the high school.
Motion by John, second by Brett. Any, any discussion this evening or questions?
I just have a question, so maybe I'm not understanding, or maybe I'm, you know, not asking, I'm standing in the background here, but will a staff member, will they be, will there be something for basically anybody who's absent? Or so will they be cross-trained in both, like office duties, or office and, or are all of us integrated?
For teachers. And so the subplans would be provided, they would provide the supervision and execute the lesson plans as written by the teacher who is absent.
Okay. I got you on that.
Any other questions or discussion on this topic, this motion? Go ahead, Brett.
That's what I brought up, at times, perhaps she would rather make, I was kind of curious exactly where this definitely fit in, but teaching positions makes a lot more sense for her place in the board.
All right. Any other questions or points of discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda this evening is a proposal to add a full-time administrative assistant for the building and grounds director. There's attached topic summary sheet from Dale Bergman and a recommended motion from the Finance HR Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? John?
I recommend a motion for the addition of a full-time FTE of a Facilities Administrative Assistant, grade six, Level A.
Have a motion. Do we have a second? A second by Nubs. Any questions or discussion on the motion or this topic? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries on the voice vote. Next item on the agenda is the Head Start Program Information Report. The topic summary sheet was provided by Jill Seaman and a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening?
I'm going to approve the 2017-2018 program information report for MAPS Head Start.
Motion, do we have a second? By Brett. Any questions or discussion on that topic? Motion. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. The next agenda item is the MAPS Head Start Five Years Strategic Goal. Attached, topic summary sheet was prepared by Jill Seaman with the recommended motion. Have a motion this evening, Jeremy?
Recommend a motion to approve the 2018-2020 MAPS Head Start Five Years to Teacher Goals.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? By Nubs. Any questions or discussions on that motion or this topic? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next topic on the agenda is the MAPS Head Start Self-Assessment. The attached topic summary sheet was prepared by Jill Seaman and a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Maria? Motion by Maria. Do we have a second? Second by John. Any questions or discussion on that motion and this topic? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the Head Start Cost Allocation Plan. The topic summary sheet was put together by Jill Seaman and Brian Dasher and has a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Nubs?
I recommend a motion to approve the 2019 MAPS Head Start Self-Assess, no, I'm sorry, I recommend a motion, Head Start Cost Allocation Plan.
A motion by Nubs. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Linda. Any question or discussion on that motion or this topic? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the Merrill Area Local Cable Access Channel Agreement. This topic summary sheet was done in collaboration from Dr. Sample, Shannon Murray, Brian Dasher, and Kasia Maschek, with a recommend, recommended motion from the Finance HR Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Maria?
I'm going to approve the Merrill Area Local Cable Access Channel Agreement, which shall be commenced on January 16th, 2019, until the end of the 2020-2021 school year.
Motion by Maria. Do we have a second this evening?
I'll second.
Second by Jeremy. Any questions on the motion or this topic or discussion?
I do, Mr. Blake, again, just to clarify. So the agreement would be with, the schools have an agreement with Charter Spectrum? Is that correct?
We have an agreement with the city. The city has an agreement with Charter Spectrum.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
Any other clarifying questions or? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next topic on the agenda is the update to Administrator Contract Language and the electronic issue. The attached topic summary sheet is from Cindy Heinz, with the recommended motion from the Finance HR Committee. Do we have a motion this evening?
Recommend a motion to approve the changes to the administrative contracts as presented to the board, as well as the issuance of the 2018-2021 administrative contracts in electronic format.
Motion by Jeremy. Do we have a second? Second by John. Any questions or discussions on this motion or topic? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is policies presented at each pertinent committee meeting to go through the manual. This was put on our agenda this evening at a board member's request, and, and looking to have some discussion on, on this topic. I believe where we started last month, when we put this to, to go on to this topic, and correct me if I'm wrong, was we focused on policy governance. Neola helped us modernize the policy handbook a few years back, and the suggestion was that any one of the policies could be divided up to say, well, this is tied to curriculum, technology, professional services, HR, finance, facilities, safety, et cetera, and be reviewed instead of just saying, let's go back to the policy committee and, and make them do all the heavy lifting, where they would ask for recommendations from all of the committees anyway. So if we could have some discussion on some thoughts of this, I know a couple of different people had spoke up asking as board members to have this on, on the agenda, so if we could hear a little bit of thought on not only how, or if we should do this, and how we should roll that out over what period of time. And I think that was the first thing that I thought of before I call on you, John, is, is who, who decides which is for, which particular committee? Do we sit down and, and sort through this and put in parentheses at the bottom so we know for next time? Or, you know, how do we improve this process? Because we could quite potentially be asked to do this again or continue to monitor this. It would be nice to have that label down there, no different than the last revision date that said Neola revised January 2016. Well, you know, we could put on there, reviewed by Facilities Committee and Policy Committee, dated such and such. That, that would be wonderful. But to your question, we can come back to how to orchestrate that or how to facilitate that. John, did you have a thought on that or just a thought on the topic in general?
No, the process. I think, I mean, there's a finite number of policies that have elaborate numbers, you know, that, but if we somewhere in the, in the heading added the line, Responsible Committee or Committee Oversight, to use a legal term, and then you see Facilities Committee, then you know, and someone has, takes issue with it or believes it should be amended, it's just natural that it goes directly to Facilities, because it's their policy. And we did that, we're experiencing that in Finance and HR, when we're talking about purchasing and we're, we're talking about cash management. Obviously, those are very HR, or Finance-related issues, so it would make no sense just to throw it into policy. It has to get run through that Finance Committee, so let's just tag them all. Now that we have a Pupil Services Committee, Curriculum, many of them are going to hit there first, and I think it actually empowers each one of the committees and the various administrators that are on those committees to effect policy change, because they're board policies, but they're really start at committee level, is my thought.
I think I can speak for most of us that we knew what we didn't want. We didn't want to have a committee decide, okay, here's the policy, and then have it go to policy, and then have it go to board, and then it takes so much longer. I think if we do have the respective committees who deal with those issues, like CTP, knows what's going on with CTP, they're a member of that committee. If it's related to CTP, I like the idea that it's labeled, because if anybody else thought that, well, maybe that goes a little bit in HR, finance, but I can see it as CTP, they can also attend that meeting as well, because everything is out front, it's transparent, and it's assigned to a committee, and that, that captures it, I think, nicely.
And once we assign it, that's the assignment, you know? So you might argue that it has HR components, but the board at some point will adopt these policies amended with the committee oversight, and at that point, you might make the argument, but the board said that's where it starts, so.
We understand that CTP, HR Finance, takes care, et cetera, takes care of reviewing these policies.
Sounds like one less committee might be.
It does. That's what I'm getting at.
You've got a reputation for eliminating committees over there.
Well, perhaps.
And not to say to have an extra layer on there, but some people on the Policy Committee are well into the grammar and perhaps the wording, and a second set of ayes certainly can help that. We can talk about how we go in the future, if that is focused at the committee level and to, our goal is to eliminate that committee, we certainly can talk about that. We'd have to review, I do believe most districts do have a Policy Committee and don't delegate that all out, but certainly do in the revision time of, of the policy handbook, but we can certainly look into that going forward. But for our next step, how would we envision the divvying up of the policies? Where would you like to see that started, Eric?
I think it's natural to start at the Policy Committee. They just do the slice and dice, and let the people just take over.
And if the Policy Committee would, would grant perhaps the cabinet a first shot and bring them in, pencil them in as to what we think we can go through them, and I think we can take care of that relatively, but to get them assigned. I know we do have a Policy Committee tentatively scheduled for February. We do have a couple of things already on that agenda, so I would say that. So, I would say that we still do that, but maybe that Policy Committee, we could bring those forward.
So, we have the power and the room and slice and dice.
They would do the preliminary work for you.
So, what it would be.
Slicing and dicing. You would be agreeing to how they sliced it and diced it if I understood you correctly, right?
Well, and my understanding of the slicing and dicing would be the signing the, assigning the appropriate committee to then review that based on that recommendation. And you'd say, oh, that was going to Curriculum, Technology, Pupil Services. Perhaps that should have gone to HR Finance in the Board Member Discussion of Policy Committee. So, that would be more the discussion, not the changing of policy on that particular. That would be the definition of slicing and dicing for that evening. And if that is a lot to handle in a given evening, we can do a subsection if you look at that. I know when Neola came in, but that was reading every policy. And Linda can attest to the hours and hours put in there that it was by section. But I think this will go a little faster on the slicing and dicing and delegating to the different committees, so.
Essentially, it's reading the heading, the title of the policy.
And then saying that to be reviewed by, and then making a master list to go to that next committee level, so.
And I guess that's what I was thinking, is the sheer amount of policies that we have to say that we're going to have. It gives a recommendation of what policy which committee should go to, probably the, um, change in that department.
I think we're going to have a pretty good idea by February, though, because we're looking at them a lot. And, you know, the most difficult ones, without looking at them right now, yeah, wait until they pummel me in the back room.
Would you like just to leave for a minute?
No, don't leave my side. Escort me to the truck. The ones that are gonna, anything having to do with, of course, the Board, and that's our first in the thousands. That's probably going to be a standalone because that doesn't belong in any committee. That's all going to be ordinarily. And I think we get that.
We see probably fewer policy changes there. And I would foresee a Policy Committee being, still keeping the members. It's just how often are we going to meet? And so, if something happens there with the policy, but I think the rest of them can be categorized easily, at least for the first shot. We may get really deep into it and understand that we're going to need some committee work to look at these and decide, are they yours or are they HR Finance or is it CTP?
Just trying to get a true explanation from you, so that's great.
Okay, John?
And then one other recommendation that is, once they're categorized to where they go, to stamp them somehow where, you know, this is a one through 12. And basically, when the month comes, if there's a 12 in the corner, it's December, that one gets reviewed. Annual review of policies is a healthy procedure. And so, once we have that spreadsheet that says this is where they all are, then just build that into a regular agenda item on those committees that say, these are the two policies this month that we're reviewing. You will see them again next year in June because we look at these two every year in June. And then I think you'll have a healthier policy manual after a year of doing this.
Sure. And I think even to switch to policy governance, the annual review by the committees is going to help that out a lot, too. Because most boards that follow policy governance have fewer policies. It seems like an oxymoron, but it's not, fewer policies. But that can also be vetted through the process, too, whether we need policy or whether that policy needs to be revised. And it's going to be the same eyes that are looking at it are the ones that are the actors on that committee. So, I think it's really going to have, I think it should be a standing, probably a standing committee agenda item.
Because you're going to know how many you have. So, there's, you know, Facilities Committee is going to have 36 policies. They need to review three of them every time they meet. That's just a standing thing that they do.
We'll certainly know at that point which ones are linked together.
And if you get sick of reviewing so many, then you can start deleting them, like mentioned, or consolidating.
Any other, Linda?
Yeah, I was just going to say, because I was on the Policy Committee when we went through the whole Neola thing and the stacks and stacks. I mean, sometimes I was leaving here with packets, yay, bye. And, you know, and I don't even know, you know, I think it's a great idea that the Cabinet's going to go through each kind of section to divide it out because otherwise, if the policy took it, you'd probably be here for months and months and nights and nights. But I do know, I don't know how that works, like, because Neola instructed us, you know, certain things that we could put in the policy and certain things that we weren't allowed or we had to scratch stuff out. So, I don't know if we can just throw that out the door and do it our own way, if that's legal? Or do we have to have some type of legal look it over after we are all done? And then I also know, like, when we first started, we had to go through one reading, two readings, three readings, and then it would keep coming back, bouncing back and forth. And so, it would be nice to just have one solid reading and okay it and be done with it.
And Neola gives us those choices because that's what's been vetted by their attorneys. And attorneys do differ. But if we deviated too far from their recommendations, we would have to have our attorney vet it. And so, that would be, you know, that's the only downfall, getting too far away from the semantics of what that policy actually meant and the language in that policy. But we certainly have the history of those recommendations. They can provide that as well. That's where we have to check the current.
Yes.
Go through them. It's only if we deviate too far, we can certainly run a past our attorney as well. We've got policy experts.
Yeah, because, I mean, sorry, I mean, didn't mean to interrupt you because doing the Neola thing was kind of the old, the old way of doing things with the old past superintendent. And so, to me, I think we should make it our own.
Your, and I think, before we get back to Mr. Smith, is we needed to modernize policies at that time and to do it in a timely manner, regardless of Cabinet. The effort that had to be put in at that time, there was some wording in there that certainly needed to be brought up to date. And that happened. And we won't know the scope or the effect on the budget or talking to our attorney until we know how many policies need to be reviewed, need to be or suggested to be modified by the Board and the committee. There may only be a handful. And if there happens to be, we want to change many of them. We're going to need to determine what our budget item is for that. Fortunately, we're not causing an ailment for Mr. Dasher tonight. He's unable to be here because he'd probably be concerned as to what we're going to get in attorney's fees. But that should not hold us back from reviewing them, starting on that, assigning not only a committee, but a frequency, if it's a quarter, if it's a month, if it's a specific meeting, to move forward, to have a plan as to how to look at this more frequently and not just the next time Neola sends us a recommended policy, so.
The good news is, too, that every district has policies and every district publishes their policies on their website. And all those policies are vetted, so obviously, if they don't.
Free policies.
Do you have something there, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I think you're spot on with the whole Neola. You underwent a process to regain control of your policy handbook, and it looks good. What we find in committee meetings is that Brian brought a policy from Green Bay, which apparently is a Baldridge Award-winning policy generator, or Pewalki.
Green Bay was policy government.
And so, we have the opportunity to adopt best practices. Unlike in school, we actually get to copy other people's papers. So, we kind of moved from gaining control with Neola to now we can take the next step of adopting best practices throughout the state, which I don't think you're going to get from a national company. They're going to get you in the right ballpark, but they're not going to do anything, you know, amazing for you. And that's where I think this next phase of policy writing is going to be looking at who's winning, copy their policy, go from there.
Any other questions or discussion? Everyone all right with the initial timeframes and how that's going to roll out? Administration, the Cabinet will pencil in their thoughts on that. In February, it will head to Policy Committee, then be distributed at the next committee meeting, and we'll review them appropriately with Policy Committee again after that. All right. Thanks, everybody, for your input on that topic. The next item on the agenda tonight is the discussion of the Superintendent's Evaluation Process Tool and Timeline. Last month, we did talk about DAPs, the new evaluation tool. So, a couple of things we need to talk about, and we covered it last month. I asked for that to be placed on our agenda this evening to talk more about the entire process. There's going to be some training to get to that point. And as it was brought up last month, you're filling that out basically as we go along for a year in advance for the next evaluation cycle. So, there will be training. And then, starting at that time, that there will be mutual responsibilities between the Superintendent filling in information. And as Board Members, we'll have responsibilities, and we will have a calendar as to what we're doing. Our current process, I believe everybody, with the exception perhaps of Mr. Waller, have been around for this process. What we're looking to do is Tammy will provide the tool we've used in the past, and it was attached on our agenda notes. We will fill that out in the next month. You'll have your time to privately do that. And then, at that point, we will, after the meeting for open session is done next month, we will reconvene in closed session to discuss. And that was the process we've done in the past. So, to bridge that gap, and instead of not having an evaluation process for an extra year here, I guess we will move forward with that process so we can continue our review of the Superintendent. Unless anyone had any thoughts or discussion on that. What we do need to talk about is, Dr. Sample and I have been in contact with the trainer from DAPs. He is out of our area here, it looks like, until February, through February and March. So, into April, May, and in the summer, he will be back. Looks like he does some seasonal travel. One of the things, being that, yeah, I was going to say, a little bit jealous. I don't own a snowmobile, so. But with that being said, the training is a four or five-hour window. And we need to work out how we can get all nine of us together to do that. And their recommendation is you either pick a normal Board Night, meaning a Wednesday, or one that's available for everybody. And this gentleman actually otherwise suggested a Saturday morning where everyone could commit and focus on that particular topic. But I don't know where everybody stands on that. But I do need to have some input before we're bringing this gentleman and assigning a date. If somebody, if we all know that we have vacations planned or we have, it's spring break, if it's holiday time, whatever it may be. So, let's start by narrowing it down in the discussion, weekday versus weekend.
Do you just want to go around the table and kind of get a?
Let's do that, because I'm guessing what the answer will be, but I want to hear from everybody. So, let's, weekday or weekend?
I would personally note a weekend, probably April, because March is spring break time for everybody. So, I'll just speak for me personally. April, maybe during the weekday. If people can't do it during the weekday, then second choice would be weeknight.
And it could be, we may have to wait till May, depending where his travel comes in and where he's booked. But it won't be before probably the end of April beginning into May. So, our main focus will be weekday and weekend. Brett, if you can pick up from there?
I would echo the same. Early mornings, if you want to start off, right in early, talking about evaluation tool. Or if you want to come in the afternoon or evening of the week, I prefer.
I'm in the same way. I'd rather not go weekend, but I would schedule weekend to probably work better. Or in the evening, I could give, pretty much guarantee I could not do it during the day in the morning. So, in the evening, like, you know, start at maybe like 4:30, 5 o'clock, somewhere in there. But I could do it any earlier.
Okay.
As far as the month doesn't matter.
Linda?
Yeah, I go, yeah, if we look at the evening and, which wouldn't make that a long meeting. Or maybe afternoon, you know, like a 4:30 type, type frame.
Let me clarify that statement, Linda. Would not be on a Board Night. It would be on a Wednesday. That would be like a Board Signified Night. So, we would not follow up this meeting with four or five more hours.
No, I know, I'm just saying.
Just to let you know, it would be a separate Wednesday.
I mean, we've done it in the past.
Yes.
I'm clarifying that we would not be trying to learn starting at eight or nine o'clock at night. Correct. Most to learn from that, right, Brett? All right. Thank you, Linda. Nubs?
Whenever the Board wants it, it's pretty, I'm flexible.
Pretty flexible, all right. Thank you.
We've got weeks after five. Day does not matter.
The earliest that I heard then is five, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, then I guess that's what I prefer, is a five o'clock start, maybe something to eat when we get here so we can head right from work and go to nine or 10 to break.
And I feel the same way.
Something unsettling like Buffalo Wild.
My, my goal is to have everyone in attendance, and that's why we're having this discussion. I think it's very important. And we've all agreed on a tool. Let's learn how to use that tool so that puts everything together. We can get the questions answered, complete the schedule and calendar of events going forward. So, I think that'll be very.
What is your preference?
Mine is whatever it takes to get everybody together. So, weeknight after five is right now. I was working, usually busy on weekends, but I would make that happen if necessary. It is weekday things with my preference.
As much as we try to pull this off, you know, someone's going to have a funeral in Pennsylvania or something.
It's going to happen, right?
Can we get this, that meeting videotaped by the production company? Or just on the hook for videotaping it? If, because if we find out, then we push the button. If all nine are here, we can skip it.
Sure. Yeah, and I'll tell you tomorrow, dates in tomorrow.
Anything that you wanted to add on that? And we'll work on getting the gentleman from DAPs is also named John. So, we'll be in touch with him, trying to get some time assigned and see what his options are. So, we can get that on our calendar and go from there. Any other questions on or discussion on this topic? Our next item on the agenda then is the Board Training Discussion with Studer Education. We've been fortunate enough that we've worked with Studer in the past. Melissa and her team that they come here and work with our district have been fortunate enough and resourceful enough to give us some dates that they're already here during the day and extend and make it even a longer date for them, but to allow for some Board Training. So, we're hearing many of the same things, so we understand what's going on. They have offered us some availability, although it'll either be in our district or neighboring districts so it is budget-friendly, where it is not an additional cost to the district. I believe the dates, the next time Studer is in the area is February 5th, and that's pretty quickly.
Right. They're going to have, it was similar to what they did last time. This is a, they meet with our all team, and then remember how we overlapped a little bit? And then I believe it was the following night was the Board. and then I believe it was the following night was the board training. So we're just looking at board training, February fifth is probably too soon, and that's, they're coming here for our alt.
Okay. February fifth or the twelfth is probably pretty aggressive, but they did have some openings, March twenty-sixth or April second. I don't know if we all know our schedules, can check our phones or our planners. March twenty-sixth or April second?
Question, just on content.
Go ahead.
I guess I have a question on content. I think we, the last time we did this is when we did the Round Robin, is that correct? Where we had different stations that we went to? And then, I guess one of the things I'll say about the training is, like, right now, I can't recall really what I got out of it besides communicating with everybody and giving opportunity to talk. So I'm a...
But what she's talking about is that other training where the, it was a retired board president from Wisconsin.
Right.
Who came in, and so that's what we're talking about here.
Oh, gotcha.
Not the overlap with the alt team and the Round Robin, but it would be, we kinda tell her, policy governance, you know, those types of things. So it'd be strictly the board with myself present.
Okay.
You, they're gonna have an idea just based on their experience and their training and working with other districts. But if there's something that you feel that we feel is unique to us, that we wanna know more about, that that person could help guide us through, then they can certainly maritalize it for us.
And I guess my point is, is if we agree to some training, I'd like to know ahead of time what the change of behavior is post-training. 'Cause sometimes you go to training things, and it was pleasant, and there was a lot of information, but did it really affect the way we did anything? Are we different now post-training? Or are we just informed about something? And so I'm more of the, if we're going to get trained, that means we do things differently. So topics should focus around that, and then we should be held accountable months afterwards to stick with what we were trained on.
Sure, and that's very similar to what Melissa does with us. She'll do conference call, a month later, conference call, and then she's here. And in between those times, we've got timelines, we've got things to accomplish. We may have questions come up along the way that we ask, because we need to get those questions clarified, because by the time she comes back, something is due. Some behavior has to have been done. So we can certainly do that. Once we establish a time, they'll give us the name of the person right away. And then, as far as I know, you can have dialogue with that person to shape it to the way if you want it. Of course, they're gonna have their expertise as well, but it is for the board, and so it needs to be useful.
So then would we discuss what, we're working on dates, I get that. But then, there will be a secondary discussion on what we would like? Or is there already intentions of what we would like to learn?
Let me add, this would be, as an example, if April second is their next visit after the February timeframe, so they're already going to be in our district. They're going to review what they've gone through in our district, and then whatever topics we have based on that expertise, as Dr. Sample had mentioned, depending who is attending for Studer, and what we would like as the board. So the sooner that we know the Studer representative, and what we would like to hear from, if it is perhaps reviewing policies and how they suggest doing this on a monthly, quarterly, annual basis, or if it is safety and how to break down different topics within that. As an example, unfinished business of the Palace Training, and what other districts may be doing, we can have that kind of a flair for that particular meeting. So at this point, they did not provide us suggestions, nor have we asked for that.
The only thing I remember was, and this was either the last training with Studer or even the training before with Wasby, the topic of board self-evaluations continues to come up, how boards need to self-evaluate quarterly. And so I don't know that we've been there, but that's something that could be useful. That's the only thing that I've seen that was consistent between Wasby and Studer. So that's one item they can bring to the table.
And then post-training, we would self-evaluate quarterly?
Correct.
Permanently?
That would be the new interest.
Correct. As long as there's a...
Follow through.
Right, I mean, if we train, I'm just a fussy. If I spend the time in training, then something has to be markedly different post-training.
Here's the intervention, and here's what happens after the intervention.
Right.
Has anybody opposed or know at this time that they could not make the April second? I know that's months in advance. I know we're...
I would just address the March twenty-sixth date, or is it, we already agreed?
No, we haven't. I was, I was picking one to start with, Jeremy.
March twenty-sixth was another for me.
I would be able to do the twenty-sixth, I'll be just coming back from the kitchen. But if you need to, if the journey is the twenty-sixth, I think I'll just watch it maybe in the morning.
It's not like being there, but yeah, I mean, that's...
Well, I guess Kevin, what I'd like to see is what their suggestions for topics are soon.
Okay.
As soon as we can get those, so we can weigh in on what maybe we would like to add or would be more pertinent for us. I guess every training I've ever developed or been involved in, the agenda is set first, and then schedule the training. Right now, we're kind of like in limbo going, well, we're gonna get the date set, but we don't know what this is going to involve. And maybe they're just that flexible, or we can set the date and then say, hey, we want this, this and this, which would be fantastic. I've just not really seen that happen in training before. So I guess I'd just like to see what they're saying is relevant and timely for our district at this point with their knowledge.
Fair enough. Those of us attending state convention next week, we may run into members of the Studer group there. A lot of times, they do present or have a booth there. So we can try to make that a point, Eric, to meet with them and ask, coming out of convention, to have some discussion with Dr. Sample and myself, and bring that back to the, to the board then in February. If we need to at a committee level before that, we can certainly touch base on that.
Certainly, and I know that they have an agenda that can be for any board in any state, really. How to policy, how policy governance differs, self-evaluation, relationship with the superintendent. Superintendent evaluation, we're already at that point. So we will find out more information and bring it back to you. So I know when Wasby came, they had a full agenda and timelines after that, and it kinda prepped a little bit.
Yes. All right, so instead of going through everyone's preference for those two nights, we'll gather the data, we'll come back and see what everyone's preference is. A, is it worthwhile at this time to schedule? B, if they are flexible, as Maria asked or stated, which night we should move forward with that? And then tie together what, if we do proceed, what the outcomes will be and how often we review them. All right. Next item on our agenda, our community conversation outcomes. Dr. Sample, if you could touch base with anything on there that you'd like to highlight?
Certainly. This time I focused on the STEAM FabLab priority as well as internships. The SLATE Conference, we've always gained a great deal by sending teachers and our support staff and our administrators to the SLATE Conference. So I did explain a little bit more into detail about how SLATE operates. I know that we've had people come back from SLATE, very, very excited about what they've learned, and it's been extremely popular and extremely efficient for getting our technology in the classroom and getting our technology in the makers' bases, and then also FabLab as it applies to that. And then also the great work by Shannon Murray, Brad Potter, Marla Conkle, Karen Akey, with the School to Work and Youth Apprenticeship at the elementary level. They recently met and kind of revived the program of School to Work and Youth Apprenticeship at the elementary level for those students who are interested in working with young people or becoming teachers in the future. And so that's a win-win all the way around. It certainly helps our elementary buildings. It's not that they take the place of a teacher or an assistant, but they come in and they learn, and our teachers are happy to have our students into those programs. So we're continuing to make progress. You can see that we reached seven different priorities this past month on our community conversation progress.
Excellent, thank you, Dr. Sample. Anyone have any questions or clarifying points there, otherwise?
Did the, at one point, we talked about having a steering committee made up of business owners to help guide the FabLab. Has that been formed in a regular meeting schedule? And...
I attended the first meeting, I believe. Kevin, were you at the first meeting?
I was invited, but unable to attend.
And I am not sure how many meetings they've had since then. Shannon, do you recall? There's been two so far. So yes, he has took first semester and made all kinds of relationships in this community. Got a lot of people out there that are very excited.
That's some type of meeting that's going to have minutes or publicly announced? Or basically, will there be decisions and/or discussions surrounding decisions there? So that we might wanna formalize availability to...
To see what took place.
Yeah, to the public and to the board.
How formal is that?
Okay.
'Cause they've not elected anybody as far as officers or, or anything, yet.
Okay.
There's more interest than there are chairs in that FabLab here right now for having people on that committee, which is great, it's a great problem now.
Yeah, just, I was kinda just looking at the structure of it, so that, once you get that many people assembled, talking about, in essence, policy and budget, although it's gonna be a lot more fun to talk about, but in the end, that's what it is. We'll have to some way roll that back up here, 'cause we have to kick, take a kick at it.
Right, right, either HR Finance or CTP.
Right, just again, like an oversight committee.
All right, any additional questions or points of discussion on the topic of community conversation outcomes? Hearing them, we'll move on on our next topic on the agenda, is the consent agenda? Does anyone like anything pulled or removed from the consent agenda this evening? If not, I'd be looking for a motion. Maria?
Approved consent agenda items gave three, which includes minutes of December nineteenth, twenty eighteen, and the financials and receipts total including twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty cents. Personnel report and donations total of six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars.
We have a motion by Maria. Do we have a second? Second by Eric, I saw his hand first, and Jeremy. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nay? Any abstentions? Go ahead, Maria. All right. Any items for future meetings, other than what we have discussed already, either in unfinished business or suggestions through committee?
Just one suggestion I thought of. We see the personnel report each month, and certain areas strike me as we're losing people in certain areas. I'm wondering if we can get an overview maybe of an annual look or a quarterly look at what, what buildings, what different departments, where we've lost people and need to replace people as opposed to getting what I see as a real quick snapshot, and then not able to basically look at it in the big picture. So maybe just a summary, like I said, quarterly, every six months, annually, at where we may be able to identify that there's perhaps issues or problems, or something that we need to address in a certain area.
The exit interviews would certainly show that as well. Because I think what the data that you'd be looking at is that we've got a, I don't know, an old middle school eighth grade science, you know, and they're ready to retire. So the exit interviews give the reasons, resignations versus retirements, and any reasons that people are willing to share when they come in. And that's unvanable, of course, it has to happen, you know, towards the end of the school year.
Maybe, and so, so let's say we've lost every math teacher at all of the elementary schools, which we have right now, so to identify where the issue may exist in the math department, and perhaps why all the math teachers are leaving. So I guess I just want to have a bigger overview as opposed to a monthly snapshot as to who we've lost, whether it's retirement, whether it's somebody that was terminated, decided to go elsewhere, in addition to what your comments are on, anything to do with that. Just give me at least a better idea of, is there a problem here, or is it just...
And that's kind of the day-to-day things that we're always working on, but we can record it up that way, summarize it for you.
Yeah, because board just need it on a monthly basis to help them to understand that in order to...
Do you like that brought to a future board meeting, or vetted through the Finance, HR Committee first to fine-tune that?
Finance wants us to be a little bit more, like you two.
I already know what I'm gonna do.
So if we could add that to the next Finance, HR Committee as well, but appreciate that. Eric, did you have something to add on that topic? Anyone else have additional items for future meetings? Linda?
I guess I'd like a little bit more information after the, this 2020 will be here before we die, just 'cause it applies, more information about what we will be doing with the Kids Kingdom building once that contract is rolled out or completed, like our expenses that we're gonna be taking in, what ideas or plans we may have, what we're gonna be doing with that building? Are we gonna be possibly maybe selling that building? Things like that.
And those options will be coming up in May and June. We don't do anything without board approval, and so we will, the strategic plan, May or June, is going to say, here's what you've got. But it's not gonna say, we recommend that you do this and this and this and this, so that'll have to come from the board. We can certainly put that out there, and I'm sure it's gonna go to committee, it's gonna go to board.
Yeah, sure, it'd just be nice to know, because, you know, I don't want to wait till the last minute to know, oh, this is what we got here, and, you know, we'll be waiting months and months before and probably more expenses. So it'd be nice to know what we're doing.
Oh, absolutely.
Rob, that, John, if you're doing that every day, you could include what our discussion about your, like, if HVAC that's probably going, if it blew up, so on and so forth. I think that was quite telling to see kind of the discussion you had around how costly those items will be when it's done, as our plan was discussed in our meetings.
Yeah, we're definitely, yeah, we'll do that, we don't need to discuss it.
Right.
I just, it'd be like, you know...
Yep. Just a whole review into review of the future of that building and the expense revenue.
I have a request, and bring something up in the week and figure out how to, probably agenda if we need be. I had a community member approach me, and he indicated, just from his memory, that we went through the referendum process, we talked about partial referendum going for improvements, facility improvements, and facility maintenance and so on. And he was just kinda curious what of those planned improvements have taken place, where they've taken place, and what the timeline is for future improvements. So maybe could that be from Dale or someone along those lines? That'd be great.
All right, thank you, Jeremy. John, did you have something else as well?
Yeah, this is a, last meeting, I asked Brian Dasher to do a comparison of the actual teacher compensation of this year versus what we proposed in the compensation salary schedule that we approved. And I noted that his topic summary sheet was in the agenda of HR Finance, but not in the minutes. So I just wanted to know whether everyone has access to the agenda of HR Finance, or... Okay, so if you're interested in reading it, it's in that agenda that you might not be on. And just to quickly summarize, you had approved a five hundred and seventy thousand dollar increase to the salary budget to rectify all the situations, and it came in at two hun- two hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred. So, you made a five hundred and eighty thousand dollar decision, and you're spending two hundred and eighty, so you saved three hundred and four. So it was, compliments to Brian Dasher, the, the level of work that he put in to the whole algorithm that solved it was pretty labor intensive, but it's also important, just to point out, that we did not spend nearly what we thought we would to, to rectify it. So there's another three hundred thousand floating around. Much of it was due to attrition, but a lot of it had to do with how he structured and moved the money around on the various cushions.
Maybe another thing, maybe it'll go to maybe, um, parking lot access, I guess, how that's handled, like, during the weekends and things. I know there's, there's vehicles there, but I don't know, are we, I guess we're not like, um, we're not a parking garage. So I don't know how that's handled, or.
Practice?
Saturday at midnight?
Might talk over your four nights next week. Just come.
Well, I mean, in the high school parking lots, how are we handling?
Just what is the procedures or the guidelines?
Guidelines for use of the parking lots.
Overnight car storage usage notification if someone has a vehicle stranded there, what are expectations?
Is our curiosity, our parking lots, those are concerned, I don't know, property, school property?
School property, we can dictate what's going on, parents shouldn't even be smoking in their vehicles when they're on public, our property.
I didn't know, with the exception of ours, ours is city.
Yes.
Oh.
The staff part across the bridge.
Across the bridge, third street. Yeah, I got you.
We can smoke over there.
Ninety-nine percent of parents are there Saturday night overnight, or for some overnight lesson, or whatever, and I can handle that. Do you know what percent of them?
I just wanted to know, because you never know, if it's just some random person who's in our parking lot, then they should be there, you know? How is that giving me?
It's, it's patrolled by the police, and we nail the, that's it.
We'll add that and continue to discuss and review that, but thank you for the, the quick answer on that, Mr. Murray. Any other items for future meetings? Keeping in mind, we did take some of the unfinished items that we had on, on the list, we did review some of those this evening, and we'll continue through committee work, as well as the next board meetings, to continue to get those items answered. We also have a continual list on there, board decision financial impact summaries. There is a radio event scheduled tomorrow, Dr. Sample and I will be on Blue Jay seven thirty, radio at eight fifteen tomorrow morning. Other future meetings include a special board meeting tomorrow night, Thursday, here in the boardroom at five thirty. Facilities committee meets next on Wednesday, February sixth, at three thirty PM here in the boardroom. Finance HR committee meets directly after that, on February sixth at four thirty PM. Maple Grove Governance Board meeting slated for Monday, February eleventh, twenty nineteen, at six thirty PM out at Maple Grove. Head Start Policy Council is Tuesday, February twelfth, twenty nineteen, at five thirty PM at the Pineover School for Young Learners. Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee meeting is on February nineteenth, twenty nineteen, starting at five PM here in the boardroom. The next regular board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, February twentieth, twenty nineteen, here in the boardroom, beginning at five thirty PM. I have a motion to adjourn this evening.
You gotta let me make the motion before you second it.
Seconded by Jeremy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned, thank you.
Just want to thank you.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you.